Good evening, everyone. Sorry, folks, we've just had a bit of a kerfluffle getting in the door, but we're good now, so good evening, everyone. Have a seat here, Charles. Welcome to the May 21st meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you please call the roll?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Adkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ayana. I'm now going to exercise Chair's privilege to read the land acknowledgement myself today. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stehobes people and their successors, the Tleilul' tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We strive to be honest about our past mistakes and to bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. Commissioners, the meetings were distributed to everyone. Are there any corrections that anyone would like to offer? No? Okay. Without any corrections needed, are there any objections to the meeting minutes as they were presented? Okay. Well, without objection, then the meeting minutes are approved. Commissioners, does anyone have any reports or comments? Commissioner Sullivan?
I do. I just have some comments from the public. So at our last neighborhood meeting, I shared the maps that we received about like the potential growth and the different growth alternatives, and I was surprised at how open people were to the changes. I was a little bit surprised, I thought there would be a lot more questions, so that was pleasant. But there was two kind of general concerns. One, family expressed concern to make sure that the neighborhood still felt like the neighborhood, and I asked a little bit more about that, and they said, "It's not that we don't want more homes or building or taller buildings along the larger streets, it's just they just still wanted it to feel like a neighborhood," which I thought was very valid. And the second concern or comment I received was just some general concern about what about the other forms of infrastructure in the city, like fire, police, hospital. They just wanted to make sure that those things are also taken care of. So that was from our neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Additional comments? Reports? No? I had the opportunity to be in a meeting where Congressman Larson was present, and so I got to ask him one question, and he is a fellow Evertonian, and so my question was about our hyper-local infrastructure, our neighborhood-level infrastructure, and in particular, some of the conversations that were had around the Park District project and the fact that we need sidewalks, we need safe walking routes to transit, and asking him if there are opportunities for us to partner with the federal government to bring some dollars into our city to accommodate the growth that we're experiencing here. And according to him, yeah, there are opportunities to work with the city, and that would involve the city putting together plans and seeking those dollars. So a lot of this has to do with partnerships. So I would encourage folks with the city to reach out through our state representatives, work with the folks on the federal level, because we have a lot of people in the community that are deeply concerned about the costs of the infrastructure needs that we know are coming, and it feels quite unfair to many of our residents to just lay the burden of those costs at the feet of the taxpayers and not pursue other avenues to bring in revenue to cover some of these infrastructure needs when we know this is a regional issue and it should not solely be the responsibility of the residents. Additional reports? Then I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, commission members. I'm York Stevens-Wajda, planning director for the city. I hope you're all doing well. First staff comment is an important one. At our last meeting, we said farewell to Becky Ableben McCrery, who wrapped up a stellar career around the region and with the city of Everett, and at this meeting, we welcome Allison Wetzel, our new long-range planning manager, three-ish weeks into the job, and four weeks into the job? Okay, that's near veteran status at this point. Allison comes to us from a variety of jurisdictions, private practice, I would say a broad expertise in planning issues, long-range code development, historic preservation, a lot of specific knowledge on fire safety regulations and fire code, building code issues and everything, so real broad skill set, a lot of relevant experience, and so far, doing fantastic.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
Yeah.
I ghost-wrote my first memo.
Yes. That's right. So you'll be seeing a lot of Allison over the coming months and years, so welcome, Allison. We also have Kelsey Hyde, land use planning manager, with us today with middle housing. We're going to be getting into the nitty-gritty of the development regulations existing and potential future, and few people know our municipal code better than Kelsey, who interprets it and implements it with the land use team, who does the land use development reviews and approvals on a day-to-day basis. Thanks for coming, Kelsey. Thanks for taking some time. A couple, a little roundup of other items, past and potential future. Park District remains kicking around. We're now looking at potentially June 5 for the council. I think we really are close now, still working on that development agreement, and talk about nitty-gritty details, those are in that contract language for sure. But we've been working on it pretty consistently and think we've got pretty close to the answer here, so targeting June with the council, and I'll keep you posted on how that progresses. Speaking of June, we're hoping to schedule a June 4 meeting with the Planning Commission. We're really in the thick of it with the comprehensive plan and may stay in the thick of it through the rest of the year here. This is one of those months where I think we could use that supplemental meeting. We hold the third Tuesday of every month, and then we have the first Tuesday as needed. I think this is one where we may benefit from only a couple of weeks after this meeting as we'll be starting a topic of middle housing. We'll get through a set of topics, and then we'll have some more to continue with. We tried to not be too ambitious with what we could get through in one meeting, so hoping to get June 4 meeting scheduled. And I don't know if Chair, is that something, I can't remember if that's a formal approval or if we want to check calendars and coordinate that over email afterwards, or if folks know now that they have that available and...
If we could take a moment, commissioners, if you have access to your calendars, could you look at June 4?
Yeah, I'm available. I have a school board from 4:00 to 6:00, but...
Okay. Is it looking good?
It's great.
Okay. Excellent.
Fantastic. We'll keep the momentum going, and then that would also include the third Tuesday in June, so we'll just keep on rolling with it. Other than middle housing, we're looking to really get into the meat of the comprehensive plan. Over the last couple of years, I've been, we're doing a major outreach push in May and June. We're visiting all of the neighborhood associations, or at least as many of them that we can get scheduled during those two months. Got about five down so far in the last couple of weeks, as well as some of our other advisory boards, Transportation Advisory Committee, Diversity Board, and some others that we'll try to visit and really get the awareness and energy up around the comprehensive plan for what I would call the final push. 2022 was about scoping and deciding what we were going to tackle in the project. 2023 was really setting the foundation, and you remember, we brought just about every element in the comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission, looking at the context, what we have on the books now in terms of an element, and what the major themes are looking forward that have emerged through our scoping process, regional policies, changes to state law and all that. So I think we've given at least a high-level briefing on all of the items. We've talked about the alternatives and the maps at length, some would say. We're going to do middle housing, which is a specific, very focused topic, but an important one, and then I think with the second half of this year would be the time to start going through potentially each of the elements or at a topic-by-topic basis, and I like the idea of doing about two for each one of them, one for a briefing and discussion, and then we've got some time to think about it, and then we'll come back, the next one for some preliminary recommendations or advice, and then all of this headed towards, hopefully, a complete plan and a recommendation out of this commission sometime around the end of the year or the new year so that we can get it to the council fresh in the new year to maybe a quick process, maybe a lengthy process, but either way, trying to get this plan wrapped up and adopted in the early part of 2025. We still have a couple interloper topics that may come up in the coming months. We've got a minor ordinance around fencing that we may bring to you, possibly as early as that June 4 meeting, and then there was a council request regarding ground floor uses in Metro Everett that the council asked the city attorney to develop a proposal on, and wouldn't you guess that the city attorney turned to the planning director for some help on that one, and I in turn will turn to you for some help on that one. So I think we could look at those two kind of one-off ordinances that we may bring through you in June and potentially into July. Temporary uses has, nothing has occurred with that since we last met. I'm pretty sure at this point that the interim ordinance is going to expire, and if we're going to do anything with temporary uses, it's going to have to be its own project. So I think we arrived at that a little bit together. It was not readily apparent that there was an obvious answer out there, and with our focus on the comprehensive plan, we just don't have the capacity at this time to go looking for deep dives into nuanced subjects if there was not an obvious answer. But we can get to it when time allows. I think that's it for staff comments. Happy to take any questions, as always, if you have them on any topic.
Questions, commissioners? One thing that I forgot to mention is the parking. So parking is very interesting. We've had some conversations. The Middle Housing and ADU Empirical Parking Study Technical Committee is developing guidance tools on parking. And so the draft empirical parking study is going to be published tomorrow, and it's going to have a public comment period that's going to run from May 22nd to June 21st, and there is a public comment webinar that's being held on Thursday, May 30th at 3:00 PM. So if that's something that interests you, you can go to the Department of Commerce website and you can register there. I'm really interested in what this study is going to tell us and what kind of recommendations are going to come forward from it.
Thank you, Chair. If, and I had not been following that one, I think what that's related to is both in accessory dwelling units and middle housing, the state has a maximum required minimum parking requirement, but there is an off-ramp for that if you do an empirical parking study that can essentially prove that you need more minimum parking than that. So it's not something that we have planned on using, but depending on the outcome of this, if it seems like a useful tool, whether it's for establishing a different parking minimum or just for understanding our parking supply, demand, and challenges, maybe that will be good to watch.
Okay, we now have an opportunity for public comment. Ayana, do we have anyone online today?
No comment.
And did we have anyone sign up here in the gallery?
We have Russell Zhou.
Welcome, Mr. Zhou. Please proceed when you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Everett Planning Commission. I'm Russell Zhou. I'm from Master Villas of King in Snoomish County, office located in Bellevue. I'm a Snoomish County manager, and I appreciate all the work that this commission is doing on middle housing. I'd like to submit a couple of comments tonight in support of many of the policies under consideration. I'd ask that the commission consider changes that will best ensure the regulations and design standards are updated to facilitate, not inhibit, the development of middle housing. First, MBAC supports Growth Alternative 3, the dispersed growth alternative, in the memo this evening. We believe it provides for growth along the urban core and the downtown area while still having the added benefit of promoting middle housing throughout the entire city. The choices that you make tonight will help guide the city for the next 20 years, and we understand that you have over 34,000 or 38,000 units that you need to account for as you plan going forward. So I'd like to make a couple of brief comments on the different topics that were in the memo from staff. First, zoning. We would support reducing the four single-family zones to one called a neighborhood residential. That change simplifies planning, and it will be more uniformance application throughout. It is on, one of our recommendations on page five on the Middle Housing Implementation Plan that I handed forward to each of you this evening. Hopefully, this change will encourage more potential projects because of the simplified structure and will help lower barriers to building more housing. Maximum building height. Master Villas supports increase in the minimum building height to 35 feet as recommended by the Department of Commerce Model Code, non-mandatory language found on page, it's also found on page six of the Middle Housing Implementation Plan that I handed forward. This height increase will give projects more flexibility in layout, it'll increase the variety and type of projects that can be built, and will in turn add detail and interest to the homes while still maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Finally, it has the added benefit of keeping housing attainable at all unit sizes, as the bigger units can be two or three bedrooms, and keep the housing price attainable for all people as we're thinking about a rich Everett in the future. On the parking topic, we would recommend either eliminating mandated minimum parking requirements or significantly reducing parking requirements, especially if they're near transit or in areas with available street parking. However, if the commission wants to recommend parking for new units, Master Villas would support a policy choice of reducing minimum parking to one space per dwelling unit regardless of the type of unit, as this would best achieve the goals of middle housing currently in front of the Everett Planning Commission. With setbacks, just briefly, my last topic, we would support a recommendation from staff to reduce the standard front and rear setbacks to 10 feet. The model ordinance from the Department of Commerce makes this recommendation. MBAC would also support maintaining the five-foot setback from interior lot lines as they're currently set in the Everett Code. We want to compliment the Planning Commission on its timely conversation on this topic of middle housing. We look forward to hearing your thoughts and feedback this evening. Finally, we will continue to work with you on middle housing at your next meeting in June. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zhou. Ayana, do we have any additional folks signed up for comment?
We do not.
Thank you. Sure, Bryce, step forward.
Can I do a general comment or are you calling middle housing?
No, you can do a general comment. If you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind, keep me your comments to three minutes and state your full name and city for the record.
My name is Bryce Nickel. I wanted to come comment about changing Riverview Drive near the I-5 exit to be more accommodating for the new apartment complex there. So I live at Riverview Apartments. We have a lack of parking. A lot of, it's a family unit mainly, like 99% families, 1% disabled people like myself, and there is extreme lack of parking. So we have two blocks, two lanes going north, two lanes going south, no middle lane to turn into the apartment complex. Only one side has parking. I would like the city to review that and perhaps change it to parking on both sides of the street with one lane going south, one lane going north, and a middle turn lane to enter and exit the Riverview Apartments, excluding turn lanes to go into different streets, of course. And this would increase parking for caretakers and families with second adults who work because, also like the comment on middle housing, I think we should increase parking, not decrease parking, because a lot of families have two working adults. Even if we have access to transit, it's not here yet. Everett Transit is limited to working, like nine to five families, so it's like 8:00 to 6:00 PM, and then afterward, we don't have transit in Everett. So when I travel to Seattle and go out of state, I have to drive to the transit center and take sound transit instead of Everett Transit. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the gallery who'd like to offer public comment before we move on? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item 4A on the agenda, middle housing. So I'll turn it back over to you, York.
All right. Good evening. So middle housing, the one topic for us this evening. This is, we've talked middle housing before. It was one year ago, actually, the May meeting, and then followed up with the June meeting, a walk through a series of topics related to middle housing and some background. We'll do a little bit of a similar kind of a tactic here, although we've advanced it in two ways. One, the Department of Commerce had been working furiously on a set of guidance documents and model ordinance, visualizations, presentations, guidebooks, middle housing type models, placetype atlas, an incredible slew of information. That was not complete yet last year. They've been able to complete that work over the last year, and now we've been able to read it all, digest it, and incorporate it into our work. We have developed, not recommendations yet, we've, but we have narrowed down to some, we're calling them staff-recommended preliminary options, which I think probably could just be shortened to some options. In some cases, there are other options, so we have some options and other options. And just wanted to have that conversation with you now that we've had the benefit of talking through some of the other aspects of the comprehensive plan, and at a staff level, we've had more opportunities to talk through it. So we'll walk through a series, I'll do a little bit of background here, then we'll walk through a series of topics for the regulations, heights and setbacks and those sorts of things. We've identified what we think is a manageable set to tackle this evening, and as I said, we'll tackle the remaining regulatory topics at our next meeting, and then we also have some overarching considerations. Once we've gotten through all of the topics, we can go back and think a little bit more holistically on how the application of those topics would impact affordability, displacement, critical areas, and other sorts of considerations there. As a reminder, under state law, House Bill 1011 in 2023, the city must allow between four and six units on all lots in a middle housing style. Middle housing represents basically everything between detached houses and larger apartment buildings. You can see a wide variety of structure types that meet that middle housing definition, and I imagine with some creativity, you could go well beyond what you're seeing there, and just about anything that includes a number of dwelling units within a lot could qualify there. There are some limited exceptions allowed under state law for areas that might not allow middle housing. In other words, could continue to exclude middle housing and require only detached houses and accessory dwelling units. We have not so far proposed using those exceptions, but that is something that is available to the city. Any development standards may not be more restrictive than for single-family residences for detached housing, so that's an overarching requirement in our work here, but other than that, there's pretty good discretion afforded to cities on the regulations there. As we mentioned, there's a maximum-minimum parking regulation incorporated into the bill, and all of this is due in June 30th of 2025, so a little more than one year from today because that's so near to the comprehensive plan periodic update deadline, we're just rolling it into this big project. Why not make it bigger? I've got a couple of examples. Mentioned lots of good commerce resources here, so here's just to give you a flavor of what middle housing types could be. We've got duplexes, and here's a stacked version on a lot. So I've got just a couple of examples, and if anybody has observations about these as we go, go ahead and interrupt, and we can return back to them as we're talking if we want to. So here's a duplex in Everett. Here's an example of a fourplex. An example of a fourplex in Stehomish. A more modern version with a flat roof, fourplexes. Not a flat roof, but another fourplex in Everett. Cottage housing is a collection of smaller dwelling units that are detached from each other, arranged around a courtyard. And here's an example of one of these in Kirkland. Townhouses can take many forms. They can be individual townhouses built up to the lot line and connected to others that are built at a different time, or they can be basically partitioned, single building that all goes up at once, but the key characteristic here is that you have either ownership or rental of the entire property from ground to sky, connected on two sides but not in the front or the back. Example of townhouse development, pretty recent. And then courtyard apartments are kind of the highest end of what middle housing can be. These are apartments relatively low-scale and usually organized around a central courtyard. That is not one of those, but that is a, as I was out walking around, it was just a new development that I saw that is three units. You can see on the right side, there's one larger house in the front, and then I think they get successively smaller, and I think this may be accessory dwelling unit, or I'm not sure exactly what you would call this, but this shows the variety that you can have within that space. Some of the policy background around this, so this didn't start with the legislature, this started with our own Rethink Housing Action Plan. We have a couple of actions that we continue to implement and work into the comprehensive plan, promote housing variety reductions in development cost and additional housing production, and facilitate greater housing diversity and production. Update, along with that, variety, choice, and capacity, update site design requirements to reduce conflicts with infill development, and update design guidelines for new development to ensure that compatibility with the neighborhood. And in that image, which is out of our Rethink Housing Action Plan, you have a couple of specific examples, which I can barely read, but landscaping in windows, prevent blank wall facing the street, entries face both streets, this would be for a corner lot in that case, wraparound porch on a corner unit, and I cannot read that far side, but some examples...
...offense, hedge, chainy wall, etc. Define semi-public zones. Each front yard is at least 90 square feet. I can continue.
Yeah, why not? Yeah.
Elevated porches define semi-private zones.
And covered porch or stoop provides space for socializing.
Fantastic.
If you'd like this voiceover, please...
Thank you, Commissioner. You're hired.
Fantastic.
So I, we linger on this a little bit because this came out of the Rethink Housing process that we weren't here for, but some of you were, and this represented some ideas and concepts. It wasn't, I don't think, all the way to recommendations on the individual ones, but they were examples of some, some design characteristics that could help with that Last year, we received a grant from the Department of Commerce to do work on middle housing. This was also started before the legislature passed that bill. We completed four deliverables. They were linked in the staff report you can review. We turned this in about a year ago in June, and it included a gap analysis, which looked at our existing regulations and policies and where do those prevent middle housing or represent an obstacle to middle housing. We did a racial equity and displacement analysis and discussed potential anti-displacement efforts that would go along with middle housing. The focus on that displacement, I think, would be on low-income renters of single-family houses, a pretty specific demographic, and I think one short finding is that we did not see any particular concentrations of low-income renters in single-family houses. They certainly exist in our, in our, in our community, and that is an issue that will come... an issue that will come with any sort of redevelopment capacity that's that's brought along. At a staff level, we're hopeful that by providing the capacity and the fluidity to the housing market that we're able to overall improve the rent and affordability situation such that displacement is is less is mitigated in those cases. We did an outreach and engagement report and have been doing outreach around middle housing. And then and then finally, there was a staff report and comprehensive plan and development regulations amendments, essentially a mock ordinance that demonstrated how we could do middle housing. Oh, yeah, here we go. So it was a simple approach to start. We consolidated the five or six different residential dwelling, yeah, dwelling use uses in the use matrix, single family, two unit, three unit, townhouse into just dwelling. We removed the density limitations, which are the fundamental barrier to middle housing. You need to have a certain size of a lot to allow for three units, even if it meets the underlying bulk standards. We, in that deliverable, continued with the height, maximum lot coverage, and other basic bulk regulations that we have in code. And then we applied the design standards that we have in chapter 1906 or eight?
Eight.
Eight. I'm going to be looking this way a lot today. In chapter eight, which currently applies only to attached housing, the limited amount that is allowed under our code, usually duplexes in an R2 zone on a lot that's big enough, has a set of design standards that address some of those things that were in the rethink housing diagram there that I couldn't read all of. And expanded it to apply to middle housing as well as detached houses. So that was the relatively simple approach at the time, and that got our conversation started, and we're here to continue it. Then the state legislature, of course, passed House Bill 1011. I listed the requirements that were in that bill. There's also the objective design standards bill, which required that any design standards be clearly ascertainable by an applicant. So you shouldn't have to guess whether Kelsey is going to say yes or no. You should know as as you're developing your project that this is going to pass muster or not. So it can't say something like quality design or maintain the character of the neighboring dwelling or something like that. But it can say require a front porch of a minimum of six feet by 10 feet or something like that. Then there was a middle housing cleanup bill this in this last legislative session in 2024. I can't remember all that went into it. It's nothing that affects affects us except to the extent that we have a lot of 6,000 square foot lots. And when they originally drafted the bill, there were rules for below 6,000 square feet and rules for above 6,000 square feet, and they left out the rules for exactly 6,000 square feet, which we have a lot of. I can't remember which way that they that they closed that gap, but that was one of the things and a couple other, I think, technical corrections. We are working within regional policy, so I'll just go through the parts in bold. Healthy, walkable, compact, equitable, transit oriented communities that maintain unique character and local culture. We preserve, improve, and expand our housing stock and provide a range of affordable, accessible, healthy, and safe housing choices to every resident with fair and equal access. We implement the regional growth strategy, and that connects to our growth targets, which are mainly focused on the our overall land capacity, which we talked at length about in the last meeting, but also has a bearing on middle housing, which plays an important role in meeting those growth targets. And we develop high quality and compact urban communities throughout the region's urban growth area. On the housing side, we are to provide a range of housing types and choices. We are to expand housing capacity for moderate density housing. That's exactly what we're doing here. Streamline development standards and identify displacement of low income households and marginalized populations and do something to mitigate such displacement. And then here's how we've arranged the two meetings, and we're thinking we get through the darker text today and then move on to the second part in the next meeting. This is within a policy framework that I won't spend much time on. It connects mainly to the land use and the housing element. So we're going to review our policies and those elements in general to make sure that they're properly informing and guiding the regulations. So I think we're working with both at the same time. The legislature bypassed the comprehensive plans and the policies and went straight to the regulations with this. So it's up to us to kind of connect those two. There are also implications for transportation, infrastructure, parks, and urban design, which would guide our design standards. Okay, on to the regulatory topics. Thought I would say a few words about each one and then pause for discussion before we move on to the next one. So we'll start with the zones. In the comprehensive plan, we've we've identified in the alternatives that we're working through the draft environmental impact statement on and proposed changing the single family designation that's in the plan now to neighborhood residential, with the exception of currently designated single family areas that are would change to something higher. Low, low rise, mid-rise, or high-rise. What that leaves us is the map on the right. So this is in alternative three, which is the alternative that is the home for middle housing. Those are the areas that would become the new neighborhood residential land use designation. In our current comprehensive plan, that single family residential designation is implemented by four single family zones, and then parks and neighborhood business kind of float anywhere. So those are also in the mix. But the primary ones are RS, R1, R2, and R2A. There are very few R2As, and I don't think any of them are developable anymore. They were drawn around anticipated townhouse developments, I think, and those have all been built at this point. So most of our land is in R1 and R2, a little bit less in the RS zone. So what would be our zones? What would be our zones potential? And we heard public comment earlier today that advocated for just one zone. And I think that's close to where staff is right now. We have not seen a real strong need to differentiate. If you take away the minimum lot size, which is the biggest differentiator among those four single family zones now, and then the maximum density that goes with it, and that's part of the fundamental approach to middle housing, then all you have left is essentially a difference in lot coverage of 5%. R2 and R2A is 40% maximum lot coverage by building, and RS and R1 are 35% maximum lot coverage by building. Setbacks and height are the same, and most of the other regulations are the same as well. So is it worth having two whole zones just for 5% difference in lot coverage? We're not seeing a real compelling case for that. And now we could differentiate other regulations. And as we step through each of these, keep that in the back of your mind. If there might be an area that is more appropriate for higher heights or for a higher lot coverage or something, then we could create those different zones. But then that's going to lead directly to, well, where would those higher and lower zones go? In the middle housing guidance out of the Department of Commerce, a lot of them, I think they call it middle housing large. You'll see a couple of examples of some pretty higher scale apartment buildings and all of that. I think we kind of have that in our low rise zone, which would be four floors and a very high lock coverage, maximum lock coverage, maybe as high as 100%. So middle housing does work along with that low rise that is on some of the secondary arterials and framing our urban corridors in some of the places that the Commerce middle housing guidance is suggesting a higher order middle housing. So if we were to differentiate by zone, a couple of ideas of what we might use to decide what gets what. On the left, you see, and pardon the overlap on the color scheme with the alternative map. So this is not the same color scheme as the alternative maps. It just happens to be, that's the RS, the R1, and the R2 in the three shades of browns. The darkest brown is R2, and then R1, and then RS is a pale yellow that you can barely see mainly around Muckelteo Boulevard. That is basically the same as it was in 1989. So we have to go pretty far back to figure out what exactly was the the differentiator between R1 and R2. It is not, does not jump out off of a map to me at least, as to why R2 is in one place and R1 is in one place. Some of it had to do, no doubt, with annexations and county zoning at different times that we annexed land. Some of it would have had to do with private requests through a comprehensive plan specific amendment process to change zones over time. Some of it would have been neighborhood scale planning. And and we can try to figure out what that story was, but I'll just say it's not very apparent to me. What is apparent is that the underlying lot patterns were defined by these zones. And so where you see the darker colors, you do have smaller lots now, and that may have an impact on appropriateness of different middle housing regulations. Maybe it's amenities and proximity to grocery stores is the number one in my mind. Yes.
On the previous slide, where can I find that map on the right?
The slides will be posted online. I can send you a copy of that map on the right as well. But the slides will be in PDF form online, and you should be able to zoom in pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll send the whole commission of version of that. Yeah, it's an interesting one.
There is also a map gallery on the Everett website that includes, I think it's the 1989 map?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is posted online as well.
Great, thank you, Kelsey. So then if we were to go a different way and and say maybe proximity to amenities, which are the same as proximity pretty much to transit in our major arterial corridors, it really all is focused on. So that's the red. Those are baskets. I went through, and that's every grocery store that sells fresh food, at least some vegetables and some something in a refrigerated case. That's not just what goes along with beer and cigarettes. There are plenty more of those out there, and they may have a can of chili or something like that. But as a minimum standard, they've got bananas. That's pretty much every single one of them. And with the exception of Snow Isle Cohop, every single one of them is on a state route, which is interesting. So that's that's proximity to daily needs, and that's going to be probably most people's most frequent visit to something that's not work or school or something like that. Maybe it's topography, where hills and valleys and ravines get to be a challenge, and that's a map of the elevation of Everett. Walter E. Hall Park, I believe, is our high point. Maybe it's sidewalks, maybe it's roadways, transportation, maybe it's transit and bus rapid transit. There are definitely some connections made to some of those in the legislature's requirements for middle housing, reduced parking, for example. And they continue to look at the TOD bill, which would mandate higher densities be allowed in proximity to high capacity transit, bus rapid transit, the swift lines essentially. So all of those are options. And I guess I'll pause here for any thoughts, although I think this most best pairs with having gone through all the standards to see if, A, there is a need for differentiation. But any initial thoughts?
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yeah, just my initial reaction when I saw the memo was that you were, the the one option was to go from four zones to two. And conceptually, that appealed to me because I can see maybe distinguishing, you know, our single family area is a very large area. And I can see maybe a justification for distinguishing between the, what I might call historically lower density areas from the other areas. And so my question is, if we were to go with something like the two-zone option, and let's say the NR1 zone ends up being, say, 33% of the total NRA or NR area. And then the NR2 is is two thirds of it. And you limited the NR1 to, say, three unit buildings, and the other one could go to six unit buildings. Would that be in a, would that run afoul of the state law in your mind, or could that be made to be still consistent with the state law?
Limitation to three, I believe, would. We have to allow at least four units on every lot. Six units if two of them are held as affordable and covenanted as income qualified and affordable. So in that sense, it would. If you made that number three to a number four, then I think we're closer to to allowing
Being consistent.
That with state law. What we've run into and why, I think there's a lot to be said for the simple approach, which does not look at the number of units per lot. And the most basic reason for that is lots are all different sizes. And so you might have a very large lot, maybe it's even a quadruple lot, should it still be limited to three units. So in our initial thinking, the any limitations on what you can build would just be on the bulk, the lock coverage, the height, the setbacks and all of that. And then if you wanted to, within that space, build one very, very, very large detached house, you can. And if you wanted to split that up into a number of large units or a larger number of smaller units, then that would be up to the the property owner developer. But that's that's just our initial thinking, and there's other ways we could go.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there other thoughts on that that issue? Not at this time. Okay.
I guess you just touched on, I mean, so I was thinking, if you didn't, see, if you just have the setbacks and the
I'm sorry, if you just have the setbacks and the, you know, lot coverage issues, in a sense, wouldn't that in some ways take care of, so a smaller lot, you'd necessarily be limited to something smaller. A larger lot, you could do more. So do you need, I mean, it seems to me that in a sense, that would take care of the issue, and you don't necessarily need to distinguish separately between two or more different zones.
Okay, and I'll remember to pause for my colleagues to add anything as well. I'll do that before. Nothing yet so far? Okay. Cruising along. Height, this is a big one. This might be the biggest single number in this whole thing here. So currently, we limit buildings in the single family zones to 28 feet, and that is measured from the base elevation, which is the smallest rectangle you can draw around the proposed building excluding eaves and porches. So it follows the topography. If you're, if you're up in a hill, you start from where you're at up on the hill. And if you're down below the street, you start from where you're at. I think we may remember other ways that heists are measured, including from the sidewalk and and some other, some other things. So currently, we regulate 28 feet, and that is to the top of the building exclusive of appurtenances, chimneys, notably railings on rooftop decks. We consider an appurtenance. That's not clear in code. I don't think railings are necessarily defined in or defined out. But our practice has been administratively that you can build up to that 28 feet. If it was a flat roof, the railings can extend above that 28 feet. So that's our existing regulations. The model ordinance, I didn't really mention what this model ordinance does, but if we don't adopt anything, then this model ordinance becomes our rules next year. So this represents some blend of broadly applicable, so it can work everywhere from Everett to Spokane Valley, depending how how they fit into this. A little bit of best practices, a little bit of 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 work with the task force, and the result is this model ordinance. But I thought it was a helpful measuring stick. We could also certainly look at a number of other cities and what they're proposing or what they currently allow. There's a whole variety of things that we can look to. Mr. Joe mentioned the the master builders' recommendations in there, and that's certainly worth taking a look at as well. In this model ordinance, maximum building height of 35 feet, and they kick the measurement definition to what the local jurisdiction would regulate anyways, or currently regulate. So we threw out a couple of options and know that in putting together these options, there are other options. You can blend them. There's obviously 36 and 34 are options, but we're just trying to narrow this down a little bit.
Question for you.
Yes.
Can you go back a slide, please? Can you go back a slide, please?
Yes.
Where it says maximum thirty-five feet building, these are really hot tonight, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
It says a maximum building height limit for middle housing of less than thirty-five feet is invalid. What's the distinction there for the inclusion of middle housing? Are we talking about all housing types, or are we talking only about middle housing?
In the model ordinance, there is a definition for middle housing, and, yeah, that's a good observation. I wonder if it allows for, you cannot restrict middle housing more than single-family, but the reverse might, I think, is allowed. So maybe it allows that you, a middle housing could be thirty-five feet, but a detached single dwelling could be lower than that.
I think that's something that we should keep in mind as we move forward, because if we're talking about increasing the massing on lots that are in predominantly single-family detached neighborhoods, we wouldn't want to create situations where new buildings are significantly out of scale, or new single-family homes are, you know, constrained more than a multiple-residence building would be.
Great. Yeah, you'll see a theme of differentiating by the number of unit, in the model ordinance, of differentiating by the number of units on a lot. So we have an analog to that. In our accessory dwelling units, you get five percent more lot coverage if you have an accessory dwelling unit. That's pretty limited. You'll see in some future lot coverage and floor area ratio, they, basically, the more units you have, the more of the lot you can use. And if the intent was to have a lower height limit for a lower number of units, that would be another example of that. So the options that we throw out is, of course, you could maintain the existing regulation, and that would comply with state law. We could adjust how heights are measured, could be to the midpoint of the roof, could be to the top of the top occupied floor, so allowing a pitched roof to exceed that. We could increase the building height to thirty-five feet. I think, other than the model ordinance and the master builder's recommendation, most other jurisdictions that we've looked at have thirty-five feet for even their existing single-family residences. We are, I think, an outlier in how low that is. And then when it's coupled with other jurisdictions, also calculate it differently, like to the midpoint of the roof or something, then we are particularly low. Now, we also have a lot of single-story buildings and low-scale neighborhoods, and I think this is one that's going to be of interest to a lot of folks. And then, of course, we could do both, change how heights are measured and the height.
Can I ask, maybe I misunderstood last time. It said below thirty-five feet is invalid, but we could maintain twenty-eight, which would be below...
Yeah, the model ordinance takes effect if you don't adopt compliant regulations ourselves.
So a compliant regulation could still include less than thirty-five feet, but if we don't adopt anything, then it will default to thirty-five feet?
Correct. And the reason they say the invalid part is that it would automatically invalidate anything else your code says. So if you say, because you would have conflicting sections, we would have a code that says twenty-eight feet, the model, state model ordinance overrides it, and that's the reason for that invalid word.
And can I clarify? So a thirty-five-foot height, would that generally allow for three-story residential, like a three-story house?
Yeah. Think typical floor heights, residential ten feet.
Yeah, you felt that.
With roof and everything.
Yeah, so pitched roof could allow five feet. There's something to how you define the, where you measure to in terms of flat roofs and pitched roofs. You can encourage a pitched roof by measuring it to the top of the top occupied floor, so there's no penalty for having a pitched roof or a shed roof or something like that. Or you could discourage it by regulating to the tip-top, and then folks might want to make productive use of every feet of height, and then you'd be more likely to have a flat roof.
So right now, by having our height at twenty-eight feet, we're providing for houses to be built up to two and a half stories.
Correct. Yep, and which is, I think, the intent of that. And anything?
Which would limit your number of units, too.
Right, but nobody's building two-and-a-half-story houses, so effectively we're limiting it to...
I wonder. I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, I suppose maybe a tiny...
I mean, it'd be a two-story house with a pitched roof and the half, the half-story is the pitched roof.
Yeah.
But as it stands today, you're not going to get too over a garage in Everett, for the most part.
I don't think you could.
Yeah.
Some of us would be bumping our heads at some points in the building. Anything to add on that?
I've read that many municipalities are instituting more like a thirty-six or even up to a forty, but that probably is where it's measured to, the midpoint of the roof, the tallest point there. Our regulations are currently midpoint of the roof, twenty-eight?
No, tip-top, tip-top of the roof.
Tip-top of the roof, okay. And that is, that is on the table to propose changing that to the roof line rather than the top of the roof?
Yes, yeah, everything is on the table. These are the types of regulations that the model ordinance does get into, but otherwise the state has left to us to decide and balance, character, capacity, affordability, and all of that.
And is it the intention to have the regulations for middle housing be the same as for just general neighborhood residential housing? Is that the intention?
That's how staff is approaching it, not, so there is, in all the commerce guidance and the state law has nine individual types of middle housing, and there can be different regulations for each one of those types. And we were thinking both to support innovation in housing development and simple rules to not have nine sections of code that says, if you're doing a duplex stacked, then here are these regulations. But if you're doing a duplex side-by-side, then go to this chapter. But that is an option for us, too.
And I know that in terms of the mix of housing needs in general, one of the spaces we're missing housing is higher-end housing, and that type of housing tends to have a higher ceiling height, like above the eight-foot standard. So that might be something we want to consider, because we know that is a need in this city to build higher-end housing. So to consider what higher-end housing with a three-story would really need to look like, or what we would need to allow for, for that to be built, for it to be attractive to consumers at those price points, or most attractive, I guess, to consumers at those price points. So just something else to think about.
So I had a quick question. If we, okay, so we go to, we use thirty-five, and we say that's the highest, that's going to the top of the most occupied floor or whatever, but not necessarily the roof pitch. So that means you can have a pitched roof, but it can't be like a livable space. So I'm thinking like an attic, a loft. How does that fit into that height regulation? Because it's not a bedroom.
I think, I think that would be it. It couldn't be conditioned space. And this, I've seen this in other jurisdictions that have the rule, but I haven't looked into the details. But presumably, there are rules for conditioned space, so I think it would be, yeah, for storage or...
Okay.
I guess I just want to inquire, I guess maybe I can see why there's the idea of the heights, but is there an underlying fundamental goal or, you know, to, I mean, it seems to me if we can, if we know, why are we doing this? It should be pretty clear what the answer would be. I mean, do we, is there any consensus as to what that underlying purpose is? Why do we care about the height? You know, what are we trying to achieve?
I mean, we can, we can decide that here.
Well, I guess, and that's what, and I think that's, to me, means more the fundamental kind of question, because I think there could be a lot of disagreement. People have many ideas about why you might want to do that. And then, in some ways, you know, on a particular site, there might be a reason versus others. But to me, the biggest challenge is maybe that, identifying what is, can we come to consensus as to why we even want to regulate heights to begin with?
Yeah, the army, like, you know, I just, I just got back for twenty-nine days on orders, commander's intent. What's the commander's intent?
Welcome home, Commissioner Lark.
I was in a desert, and there was no running water for twenty-five days, so...
I don't even mean, what was driving the twenty-eight, when that was decided? Is it just tradition? I mean, how...
So the goal was to provide a variety of housing options. Okay, so we go back to what we are seeing in Snohomish on this one. Those are easily eight-foot windows. So you're almost at sixteen feet in just your windows alone in that building. And then you add your roof line, you're up to thirty-plus by there. So you've provided four, maybe eight, units in there. So you're getting the options for a wide variety of housing types. So it could be four units, it could be two units, it could be eight units, just depending on what the options are. And that way, you're giving the option of developing a whole host of different dwelling types within a structure, and you're providing more flexibility for them to do that. So if you're going to the peak at thirty or thirty-five, or if you're going to the base of it at thirty or thirty-five, I mean, I think it depends on what pitch you're going to end up with, because even if you say it's unconditioned space, somebody's going to come along and want to put a loft up there. So again, where are we setting the development height? And even though the house on the right is taller than the house on the left, because you have the setback and everything, it's not really dwarfing it. I mean, even from the angle that we're looking at it from. And if you, I just drove down into north Everett a little while ago, and we, there's a range of heights there, from, of single-family and multifamily as you're going along. And so if you're keeping your facades and your porches in a similar way, I think your height isn't going to be as much of an issue as if your setbacks are changing as much.
Yeah, so it seems to me if the goal is to provide max, I mean, maximum options, then the higher, or maybe no height limit. I mean, so where do you draw that line is the question? Yeah.
I concur with Ms. Wedsall on the, as it relates to the importance of setbacks and maintaining some level of consistency. I think that in some ways provides some grace to differences in scale. Like this, obviously, the smaller structures in the foreground, so it would read larger, but the setback seems to be relatively uniform. You know, also, the character here is consistent, right? So if we go to the Yorick on the street photo, yes. So this is what I want to avoid, okay? This doesn't have street presence, it's not consistent with the structure to the left. The setback is consistent, which I think is helpful, but imagine how that would look if it were ten feet off the sidewalk, as opposed to setback as far as it is. It would be even worse. I'm not saying that the scale is wrong necessarily, because things will change over time, but I think that we need to give some consideration as to design requirements in addition to both scale and massing.
Just one observation. I think in the, in the issue of how we measure height, I think we, in this climate, we don't want to be inadvertently encouraging flat roofs, either for climate or even for neighborhood scale, neighborhood character. We don't want to be punishing pitch drifts. We want to encourage pitch drifts, I would suggest.
Okay, we don't need a decision today, but we will need to make a decision. Ultimately, the decision will be the city councils, and I think you've given us some things to think about, and...
Can we maybe just hear from you commissioners on where your thoughts are as far as numbers? No commitment, but just ideas, where your head's at there?
I would strongly support the thirty-five, to measure it to the midpoint. I think that would be very, very helpful. I don't think it dwarfs the existing homes. I think it levels things up. I don't think it's crazy tall. Also, it's, encourages, I think, in itself, so certainly doing residential units and trying to fit them in some of the jurisdictions that have lower ones, or even in the twenty-eight feet. It forces us to kind of smush out those, it kind of makes you lose that pitch, and it's much more expensive, it's harder to build, it doesn't warranty as well. So I think anything we can allow greater height to get that, to get that full two-and-a-half or three-story, and then have a pitch in there, would be beneficial.
I'm in agreement. I would just say thirty-five feet from the top floor, you know, accommodate that pitch. It makes the most sense to me.
I also concur. I think thirty-five feet is about right.
I would say it sounds right to me, but I will say probably fifty years ago, Christian was sitting there saying, you know, twenty-eight feet sounds right. So only a product of the times, but because it's higher than what we have, we'll say thirty-five now, and in twenty-five years, they'll shake their heads and say, well, obviously it's got to be forty.
I mean, I would, if you're really asking me, I would just say, why do we even have single-family neighborhoods and just let the market slowly let it evolve? But that's, I'm making the compromise with the group right here.
I like thirty-five. However, I would like to see that just to the, to the eaves, not, not including the roof. I agree very much with Commissioner Zalinski that we should not kind of force people into a de facto flatter roof situation if they want to have higher ceiling heights.
So just, I'm trying to figure out what you just said. So you're saying thirty-five feet to the eve, and so would that mean...
I'm sorry, to the roof line.
To the top of the roof line.
No, no, to the roof, where the roof begins.
Sure.
Yes.
So if I wanted to do a Tudor-style house...
No, 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 meaning, so above that, the roof above that would be in addition to the thirty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I wanted to do a Tudor-style house, and the roof began at thirty-five, conceivably, given the pitch of a roof like that, it could be forty-five, fifty feet high. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that is quite an unlikely scenario, and I think that there could be regulations put in place that could prevent something like that. So I don't think we would need to take the, to, you know, extrapolate the scenario out to the most ridiculous. I mean, I have heard of folks trying to do things like build a house to the height that is allowed, and then build it like a spire that has like a...
A little Sagrada Familia.
...power in there. So there are obviously ways that people will try to skirt rational regulations to build the ridiculous, and I think we can probably provide some guide rails around that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the concept of thirty-five feet. I think it makes sense to create more flexibility in building form and provide for more units enassing. I would encourage staff to think through all of the various ways that one could interpret the ultimate language you think you're deciding upon, and also make it as easy to administer as entirely possible.
As a, sorry, as a character thing, is it possible for us to encourage the building of a pitched roof through the height and say, hey, if you're going to do it pitched, you can have a little bit extra?
I mean, something along those lines. If we really, as a community, don't want to see stacked flats at thirty-five feet with a, you know, garden up top and another eight feet of fencing, potentially, we could structure, you know, the design regulation around that as part of this...
I'm convinced that Yorick and crew could come up with something to make that encouragement happen. Or make the developers of a flat roof at thirty-five feet, require them to own it for sixty years so they have to fix all the...
Well, I think Commissioner Finch, to your point, that's why many municipalities are looking at forty feet rather than even thirty-five, thirty-six, because I think that there is concern about exactly what you're describing, which is someone taking a regulation and some wiggle room to a ridiculous degree, but also speaking to Commissioner Zalinski's concern about forcing folks into flat roof situations because they, they want their architecture to be a certain way.
If I can just kind of ask a broader question. In my mind, like, we're looking at regeneration, changes and transformations to the city, and what we're thinking about in terms of the missing middle is kind of making that regeneration and transformation, like, more accessible, more affordable to individuals. And in my mind, like, you know, like, I currently own a duplex right now, that's, I live on the bottom floor and rent the top floor. But like, if I were a, you know, a group of young people trying to buy a house here, trying to take advantage of the missing middle, my thoughts would be, how do I buy a underutilized single-family... my thoughts would be, how do I buy a underutilized, single-family home that's just got like one story? And like, you know, we're paying five hundred thousand dollars for an eight hundred square foot house up in Everett, North Everett here. Like, how many lots can we, how can we tear this thing down and put condo units in there? So me and like the six friends that we came together with to pool our income together to purchase this space and build a home and build a future for our families. How, how can we do that? So like, in terms of like regulation, and like, how can we think about regeneration as a conditionality for what kind of regulations that we set? If that makes sense.
I have a different question.
Okay.
Somebody else can talk about it, that's fine. I just realized I don't remember the answer to this. If we, thirty-five, great, multiple units, fine. Can you, are we, I'm thinking of condos. That's the one I'm trying to come up with. You can have, we can have three condos, right? You can have six, nine, whatever. Okay, all right. I don't know why, but we hadn't talked much about those.
Yes, we are, we, we really wanna encourage homeownership along with this. I can't remember how much we've talked in this setting about that, but there are land division regulations that we're gonna need to look at. We may try to get to that in the next meeting. It may even be more complicated than, than we can get to there, 'cause staff is working on the interaction of state law with, with city code. A priority of mine is that if you can build it as a condo, you should be able to have it as fee simple subdivision, which means that you own the land and the structure if it's a side-by-side townhouse. In other chapters of code, we have, well, the maximum, minimum lot size and some other restrictions on subdivision. Condos is much easier, and yes, you can always, whether it's stacked or side-by-side, you can always sell it as a condo. But there are some financing challenges and some just preference challenges associated with that that we'd like to solve. I think it's just gonna be a, a technical hurdle to get there.
I just wanna say, like, that is exactly my same thoughts as well. Like, how can we regen a single-family house into like a sixplex condo for just, you know, for individuals? That's, that is where my brain is. That was what I was asking about in the, in the kind of notion of regeneration. So I really appreciate that question. Thank you. That's, I'm glad, I'm glad I let you have my chair.
And the condo question was kind of what I had in mind when I was thinking about a high-end housing, luxury housing. So you can't assume by default that everyone will want an eight-foot second and third story. And that may not be appropriate for the type of housing that's being built or the market that the housing is, is going to be offered to. So we should consider that.
I mean, I remember a kind of conversation back, like around heights for Metro Everett, and they started shifting away from just flat numeric numbers to kind of talk about stories, like, hey, it's gonna be this many stories. I don't know if that's a useful tool here, or make it more confusing for developers, but whatever, in my mind, making it easy to interpret as possible, as Commissioner, Commissioner Finch was saying, like, and it's, and give people flexibility to really accommodate what the market wants. Like, that, that would be, if we could find a way to do that, that's, I'm, I'm in support of that. I may not be in the right direction, but that is, that is, that is my commander's intent.
Okay, I think that's, that's, will be helpful. We'll, what I'm hearing is three full floors and some allowance and incentive for pitched roof, and we can take that back and work on all of the thorny details. All right, maximum lot coverage, this is, I think, one of the other of the big three. Maximum lot coverage is the percent of a gra- of the ground area of a lot on which buildings are located. So it's not impervious surfaces. It only regulates areas and buildings that are covered by weather-tight roof. It does include carports, even if they don't have walls, and storage areas. Does not include eaves, decks, and uncovered porches. And the, I guess, the handle on a panhandle lot does not count for that lot area. We have those two lot coverage maximums, thirty-five and forty percent. Is there anything else interesting about lot coverage in our current regulations? Okay. The model ordinance has this progressive standard. So the more units you have on a lot, the higher the lot coverage is. One thing that's interesting to me is that this does not, ignores the size of the underlying lot, and I don't know how much of a, of a big deal that is. If you happen to have an acre, which is not very common in Everett, but if you happen to have an acre, then it's gonna be easy to get to six, and you're gonna have a higher percentage lot coverage than somebody who's coming in with five-fifth of an acre lots. Is that unfair? Or maybe that does make sense, because it's more of a coherent and consolidated development, so it deserves more, more lot coverage. It does encourage more housing on a given lot of the same size, because you're incentivized to do smaller units and more of them with this progressive standard. And then the numbers are all above ours, forty-five to fifty-five percent in this, in the standard. A lot of the examples in the Commerce Guidance are, seem even above that. A lot of these images that you see seem to be at least more sixty, seventy-five percent lot coverage.
I, I mean, I remember back when we had the conversation about ADUs, we talked a lot about lot coverage. I mean, I think that would just be me and Commissioner Zalinski back in twenty seventeen when we first had that conversation. But what we found is, like, a lot of the times, there was, when we had, we, the setback requirements, I mean, it, some of the times, it just seemed redundant in my mind, because we had these setback requirements, and, you know, maybe have one or the other, whatever makes it kind of easiest to manage for the person trying to, trying to solve the puzzle, I guess. So, I mean, I don't know which one we wanna go with, which one we think is most important. But, you know, a lot of the times that we got, you know, within five percent of where we wanted to be, just with the, oh, you can't build that close to the edge of the lot anyway.
Yeah, right, absolutely. Then I don't think staff is recommending this, but the model ordinance and other cities regulate floor area ratio, which brings in the bulk of the building, would limit for a given footprint how many floors you could have. I see some shaking heads, and we have shaking heads on our side, too. Just also to illustrate that there's other ways to get at kind of, lot coverage prioritizes open space at the ground, which I think makes it, makes it more valuable than the floor area ratio. So some options, maintain what we have, provide this progressive standard, where the more dwelling units you have, the higher lot coverage you have. Or we could just increase from thirty-five or forty to something else. Those are kind of our options. That's where we get the other option of the FAR, so we'll leave that in the dust, and...
Yorick, what does bonus lot coverage, what does that mean?
That kind of prog- like what, this, this would be bonus, or like we have with accessory dwelling units, you get five percent more if you're building a, an accessory dwelling unit. The next one, and then I'll go back, is open space. You could also define it, there's setbacks, which is how far from your lot line you need to be. There's lot coverage, which is how much you can cover with a building. There's floor area ratio. And then there's open space, which could be an alternative as well to say, like, every unit needs to have ten-foot by ten-foot yard. And then whatever that winds up shaking out in terms of floor area ratio. We currently have, it's really confusing. I, I don't totally understand it myself. Only in the RS zone, a duplex, or jumping to the R2A zone, a three-to-four-unit townhouse, you require two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per unit. Separately, all buildings, I think, require ten feet between the building? All buildings, single-family zones?
I don't know offhand if it's, if it's all.
Oh, I finally stumped her.
Sorry.
And then there's a lot of, I, I think these are really good. There's, there's a lot of it in here, but there are these regulations on that onsite open space. So this could be an alternative to go this direction rather than the maximum lot coverage, both requiring an amount and the location and the qualities of that space to encourage and require yards of some sort, patios, what have you. So I won't go through all of those, but we'll just talk about all of those. Not setbacks, setbacks is the next item, but lot coverage, floor area ratio, and open space. Any thoughts about where the commission is thinking there?
Commissioner Ballard?
Well, I guess first, I, I wanna know your recommendation. I didn't see like, but from the angle of, of processing these permits, 'cause I keep coming back, I mean, part of this needs to be streamlined, right? Really simple, you want, you want the, the builder, the homeowner to come in and be able to do this as much as possible over the counter. So looking at from that and these different ways to kind of control open space, is there a preference or a thought on that way?
That, that series of slides, three slides and seven-hundred-and-fifty words seems more complicated, but that is likely to result in more functional open space, so like actual yards versus leftover. And I think that was the, the reason for the ten-foot separation between buildings, was trying to avoid shadowy channels between buildings. Now, the downside of that is you get a ten-foot channel between buildings and maybe less on the other side, so by consolidating it, you might get better outcomes. Terms of recommendations?
Well, if you think about the cottage-style housing, the ten-foot channel would be perfectly fine. So, but you've got the lovely courtyard in the center that serves as your open space. So I guess, I think lot coverage makes a little bit more sense, because you can look at it and say, are we making, are we doing, are we achieving what we're trying to do as well as putting some definition around what we're getting to? And there are certain things that are not included in lot coverage, right, Chelsea?
Yeah, there's certain decks and porches and things like that that are excluded from that amount, so, and that way, they're kind of a bonus in and of themselves.
And surface parking and driveways.
Right. So that is something to clarify, lot coverage is lot coverage by building. So this doesn't talk about, you know, surface parking or those types of things. It would count things like an accessory structure or an accessory dwelling unit. So any building that is on the lot would be factored into that lot coverage percentage.
I couldn't remember, are we gonna end up talking about, like, greenery or tree requirements? Is that a later discussion? And I'm asking because I'm curious how that would tie into open space, or if they would be separate.
Yeah, that, that is something, we don't really have, we have landscaping requirements, but they're pretty mild in the single-family zones. It's like erosion control, grass, basically. Anything that's not paved, you have to put grass or something. That's about it.
There are provisions for areas where you are doing like a duplex on a lower-density residential lot right now that would kind of up the landscaping requirement a little bit. So we could consider adopting that, I think, across the board, or reducing it. I think there is options there either way.
Thanks. Commissioner Shelby?
Yeah, just two, well, two things. How, how do we currently compare as far as lot coverage to, to peer cities? And how would like, you know, the forty-five, fifty-five percent across the board compare? That's number one. Number two, I'm just throwing it out there, is what, what would we think about doing a higher percentage of lot coverage closer to a high-frequency transit? So that you had, you know, the ability to do larger developments, kind of get that transit-oriented development kick-started a little bit? And just say, hey, you know, you can have an extra fifteen, twenty percent. You're gonna build it, you know, within half-mile of a high-frequency transit.
And there's the zones question. I knew it would come up at some point.
There's the zones question. I've got Tacomas in front of me, and they are not going with coverage. They're going with straight setbacks.
Commissioner Atkins?
And tree retention, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I, I really like the idea of the bonus lot coverage with additional units on the lot, that just kinda rewarding those developers and property owners that decide to densify their lots. I, I think that that's really excellent, and would love to see that in, in the end.
In that, in that vein, I want, I wanna say, to me, it seems like there's kind of really two paradigms almost you can approach this issue. Is it, are we looking to, you know, facilitate and, and encourage, you know, the middle housing and, and more density? Or are we just begrudgingly having to comply with state law, looking at the way to minimally comply while maintaining the status quo? I mean, there's, and, and I, I mean, I think people could be, you know, two different camps on that, but I think the, the implications for those is, is severe. So again, I'm kind of coming with those fundamental questions. We have a consensus of, of where we're at on that. I mean, I maybe have my own personal thoughts, but that's the larger issue here.
I mean, I, I do think we do have, like, the, some command intent. Like, if you look at like Mayor Franklin's initiatives, like, it is to make more housing. And so that is kind of like the North Star for our, for our, you know, like, how we do our deliberations. Like, we shouldn't, like, the guidance from the mayor's office, the guidance from the mayor, who is to not, is to make this as amenable as possible for more housing to occur. Like, that should be the goal. So, you know, not approaching it begrudgingly, but find a way to make it streamline human scale, the way to make us, make it, to make the city, you know, more, like, more livable and have more housing for more folks to, again, like, the same, the same drumbeat I hit on every, everything. Like, there's a lot of great things going on in the city. There's just not enough people to put their hands to the, to the oars and row on it. So, you know, we, we have our command guidance, we have our direction to go, which is make this, make it easier to make more housing here.
I tend to err on the side of aggressively regulating when it has to do with health and safety, and aggressively deregulating when it has to do with untying the hands of the marketplace and industry to be innovative. And so that's where I'm coming from, Commissioner Yanasek. So I think we each probably do have some of our own perspectives here. I like that the increasing lot coverage incentivizes building housing. But I, I am wondering, though, what is the benefit? Other than that, what is the benefit to having lot coverage instead of just allowing what's built to be driven by setbacks? And what, what is the benefit? Because it, it seems like yet another restriction.
I think the benefit, and, and it's something that's in existing code, so it's a, it's a strategy that would remove the density limitations, which is a pretty big step, while otherwise maintaining the character-defining, if some would call it that, aspects of the regulation, which is to say, we're gonna allow significantly more housing development in areas of the city that have been off-limits for decades. But at the end of the day, less than half of your block is gonna be covered with buildings, no matter what. And I think that is gonna be compelling to some. As to which ones are our marching orders, there are people in, in both camps that prioritize the neighborhood character and limiting kind of train, change. And then there's others that prioritize the housing. I think you're right about the mayor's directives on housing at all price points and increasing choices specifically. But as you saw in the Housing Action Plan, and our current comprehensive plan is covered with reminders that that neighborhood character and a general openness is important to, or has been important to this city. I feel that that is changing, and the priorities are shifting a little bit as we see some of the downsides of, of that character management. And I, I like the reminder about tree, tree retention and landscaping are other ways to generally keep the scale, keep the scale open.
Commissioner Finch?
So, many comments. I, I think your, your concept about allowing for greater lot coverage near transit is interesting. I, I think the challenge I have with the transit concept is we seem to set that threshold for high-capacity transit fairly low. And there don't seem to be a lot of creature comforts at those stations. And so either getting to that transit station, or what you're doing while you're there, if we're going to provide for more development, we need to also make those, those, provide some level of amenity and safety and comfort. So until those both are going, it's hard for me to say, yeah, just, you know, open the floodgates.
Like, one of the bills that failed, unfortunately, at the state level this year was the inclusion of like neighborhood business cafes, that kind of thing. I, I would absolutely love to see us embrace that.
Well, I'm just, I'm not gonna go stand my rocker and wait for a bus in the rain. So, so think about that, I think, going forward. But I think the concept of character in Everett is very important. I think that when we're here, we talk about, or there is often talk about kind of the ideal situation, but the reality is, in Everett, a lot of our properties have structures on them. In some areas, they're far from highest and best use. But in many residential neighborhoods, you know, character is very interesting and important. There's been some discussion about higher-end homes and the fact that we, we need more of that here in Everett for a variety of reasons. Well, the higher-end homes, they're, they're often in places that have unique... Well, the higher-end homes, they're, they're often in places that have unique geographic characteristics, but they're also in places that have unique character. And so, if we're doing things with our lots that destroy that character or that cohesion of character, then I think we're working at cross purposes.
I, I want to push back on that a little bit, Commissioner Finch. I want you to consider who historically has determined what that character is, who has had input into that. And to, to relegate us to the character that was chosen by a population where it was not inclusive, where there were not enough voices at the table, to relegate us to being locked into that and to say that that is the only character that matters, preserving that is the only character that matters, I think it is a limiting perspective.
I don't know that my comment has to do with the preservation or limitation of that character, but what I want to do is make sure... Homes, long-term. Think about the Northwest neighborhood, for example. There are a lot of opportunities for... A lot of opportunities for modern architecture if they're of an appropriate scale. It's a great neighborhood with a lot of character. That character can be defined in many different ways, but if we start putting your man-on-a-walk everywhere, that's gonna change the character of that neighborhood and not in a positive way.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, I, I kind of have two comments. I, I think first, when we talk about character and just all these different, like we haven't yet gotten to design standards, but I, I really think that it's important that we consider having unique buildings and creating the, the atmosphere and environment for unique buildings to be created. And if we stifle the kind of innovation and uniqueness of some of these buildings, we're just gonna wind up with a city that looks similar, looks kind of boring. And I, I know that kind of opening the floodgates and trying to get as many unique buildings as possible results in a whole lot of really bad-looking buildings, but 100 years from now, so many of those bad-looking buildings aren't gonna be around. Think of the buildings that we, that have been around for the past 100 years or over on the East Coast, of course, hundreds of years. And not, so many of them don't necessarily conform to their neighborhoods or to the buildings around them. And I, I do think that there is a point of, on top of all that, that when we are looking at things like open space and lot coverage and whatnot, we really, really need to be making sure we're having that overarching consideration that, I know I belabor this point so much, but 40,000 units that we need to be accommodating over the next 20 years. And I, I really just think that that should be the thing that is top of mind when we're making any of these decisions, and that should supersede any other consideration. Not saying that there are other things that we should consider, but just, for me, I'm, I'm looking at this and thinking, how can we make this, how, how can we look at lot coverage and open space and setbacks? How, how can we modify these provisions to result in the greatest amount of units built?
Perhaps some of the concerns around change can be dealt with through historic preservation measures, but I don't think we should fear change. I don't think that change should be framed as a negative. I think innovation and change go hand in hand, so change is necessary.
I think this is complicated by that there's a multitude of different ways that we can address what I'll call bulk of the volume of buildings or the amount of ground area that can be covered by buildings. Good input. I think we'll take this back and keep noodling on it. There are a lot of different technical angles that we could take to generally fit the two purposes of increasing housing availability and choice while making our streetscapes beautiful. Setbacks is, I, I guess, in the same vein as those other ones. We have 20 feet front and rear, we have five-foot side unless you're on a corner lot, then it's 10 feet from the street side, and there's a list of exceptions from these. Accessory dwelling units can go in the backyard, all the way to the lot line if it's on an alley or within five feet. If not, residential accessory structures have some, some specific rules. The rest are pretty detailed. Porches, decks, and steps up to 42 inches above grade may extend into half of the front setback, so presumably around 10 feet in front of the house. There is the interaction of setbacks in these kind of porches and other front yards, that there's an aspect of community building, and that's where you're likely to meet your, meet your neighbors or interact with folks passing by on the street and everything. So there is some value to that front setback and making sure that the principal, the main structure of the building setback farther than the, than the deck and, and the stoop and all of that. There are ways to encourage garages to be set back farther than the front door. I think the model ordinance has a 10-foot setback. Yeah, there we go. The front setback is 15 feet, but again, with this progressive standard, it drops to 10 feet if you have more housing units. But then the garage door, if access from, access from the street, needs to be set back 20 feet. We do have a regulation that seeks to keep the garages behind the front door. I can't remember exactly how that operates. But that's another concept that interacts with the setbacks. In that model ordinance, five feet for sides and 15 feet and 10 for the rear as well. Couple of options just for that conversation is reduce these setbacks. Now, there is a recurring pattern. Commissioner Finch mentioned it in a couple of those images. There's a pattern aspect to this. If all of the houses on a street are 10, 20 feet back and then all of a sudden one of them is sticking out front, although eventually maybe you'll have more like that. And is that pattern important enough to, to drive the regulations? There's this concept of the porches and the, and the entries and the garages and the yards. There's an option to differentiate by the relationship between the lot line and the right-of-way. I think I got some images here. Those are two different neighborhoods, South Everett, North Everett, and you can see, look at the vertical line on that's East Drive there at about, between Madison and 61st, I think. The red line is the property line, and you can see how it's really tight up against the street. So if you wanted to back buildings up off that street, you would need a setback. On the right side is North Everett, and that's Wetmore at around 16th. There's quite a bit of room within the right-of-way. Going down that street, you may not realize that half of people's front yards is actually city right-of-way. Unlikely that we're really gonna grow that street and widen the street, widen the sidewalks, widen the planting strips, whatever. So, a 20-foot setback from the lot line on the right operates differently in how you perceive it on the street than it does on the left. And our, we have no differentiation right now. That is something that staff would like to address, I think, through either designating streets ahead of time to say, these are streets that have, quote, excess right-of-way for our presumed needs in the future. Sometimes utilities are in these areas, sometimes that's where the power lines are gonna go in the future or they are there already, so there are other needs for these. Or it could be a case-by-case basis. Then we're gonna have to be arguing with people at the counter, but we wouldn't have to go through every street in the city and decide if it's excess right-of-way or not. I, do we want to go over setbacks or kind of lump that into the last conversation? There are some specific aspects to it.
I mean, there's an old quote I love, measure what is measurable and make measurable what is not measurable. And so, the idea of cataloging, documenting, and like quantifying what streets are what in the city makes a lot of sense to me, and is just a good asset management tool and would probably in the future allow for us to make better, more informed decisions about planning. So, you know, the staff recommendation and inclination to figure that out, I am in full support of. I'm also like the idea of the 10-foot setback. I mean, I, when I lived in DC, I loved it. It was the small setback from the front door, so you could, you had your stoop, you can easily say hi to your neighbors. It was a very convivial situation. And I, you know, again, it just makes, makes a lot of sense to me. And yeah, it, some places, sometimes, it's gonna be awkward. Adolescence is awkward, but we're growing up as a city, so, you know, we've all been through there, we've all been through it and survived.
Oh, are you saying you want staff to go through street by street?
Yes.
Really?
That's, that's, I, I mean...
Every street in Everett?
Yeah. Again...
How long would that take you?
I don't know, it could be, there might be a way to automate it. Our GIS analyst was looking at a way, I think we have the sidewalks delineated and everything. The utilities and all of that might be a little bit more complicated, but you could also always have carve-outs for utilities.
For sure, yeah.
I mean, I guess you would have to.
Right.
You may not build your house on top of a water line, would make sense.
Well, I don't know how there's another way. I mean, the implications, just this right here is huge. I mean, the difference between using the right-of-way or the lot line is, for some of those people, the street would be massive.
Didn't, did I hear you say that we could at least, I, I don't know, I'm kind of torn on this one, because like I think about my neighborhood, this, it doesn't even matter because none of our lots really look like this, and our streets don't either, so it's irrelevant. But I hear that it, the image on the right, it, you definitely, it's like, wow, that's cutting somebody's front yard in half, that's a big difference. And then the image on the left, like, yeah, it's like right up on the road, so I understand these are two extremes. I'm just trying to think, it sounded like you'd said, staff preliminary recommendation, reduce setbacks on streets with excess right-of-way, but then you're saying that we don't actually have a definition of which street has excess right-of-way? Who determines that?
Correct. I, so we have, I've worked with the Public Works Director, there have been a couple, setbacks are not modifiable right now. Most, many regulations, you can apply for relief from the regulation, and if you meet the standards, which are usually equal or better results than, than following the regulations exactly, meets the intent of the standards, sometimes difficult to divine. Setbacks, there is nothing that we can do, you have to go get a variance, and there have been some cases where there is a, you know, those are wide right-of-ways, but reasonable. There are some where in the 20s, we thought, we thought that there was gonna be the big arterial there, and it, and it wasn't. So there's this huge open space and somebody wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit up to their lot line, which would leave another 30 feet until you got to the street, and we can't do that. So you gotta build it in the middle of your yard, even though there's nothing anywhere near. So, we have been wrestling with that particular case, and there's some other examples like it for a while, and that was the, the, the idea, separate from the comp plan, that we were toying with. And so there was at least preliminary agreement that it would be workable, either by pre-designating it or by giving some, you could say, reduce the setback if the city engineer and the planning director agree that the right-of-way is, is excessive for the likely needs or something like that.
Well, I would want you to do the path of least resistance that streamlines the process and helps create more housing, so if it's catalog, cataloging every street, then you have to do that. But if there is a way to not do that and it will reduce friction, that's what I'd like you to do. Also, I'm okay with 10 feet, just for the record.
And it could be both, I suppose.
Commissioners, do any of the, you other folks want to weigh in on the 10-foot proposed recommendation by staff?
I like the 10 feet.
I support the 10 feet and the five sides.
To the, the topic of setbacks relative to the two diagrams up there, it strikes me that the definition of the point of measurement is the key, as opposed to, so if you define what characteristic is the starting point for the measurement, that might save you from having to catalog every street in the city.
Yeah, the challenge, normally you would say the back of the sidewalk, there are many, well, I guess, East Drive, there is no sidewalk, so then it's like the fut, where the future sidewalk will be, and that is challenging, and if you guess wrong, then there's a problem. You could say from the edge of pavement, especially in South Everett, there's a lot of, we haven't finished building parts of that city, of the city. That would be the only, but there, but there could be ways that you could, that you could cross that. I know that's a struggle right now with some requirements that we have that relate to the back of the sidewalk.
As it relates to the minimum setback, I, I think that side yard setback, five feet, that makes sense to me. Some level of open space in the back is gonna be important. Front setback, we just have so many different conditions in the city of Everett in these various areas. On a grid, depending upon, you know, the style of development, five feet might be reasonable or, or seem, seem consistent with current development patterns. In other areas, you know, 20 might feel like you're getting too close to the sidewalk relative to some of the historic homes. So, I, I think there's just so many different conditions that it is difficult. As you mentioned earlier, maybe some of this can be addressed through districts, historic districts, but they would likely need to be more created in order to do that effectively. I think this is just a really challenging one. I, I have seen instances where there is a, a setback, however, if the average of the two homes on either side is such, you know, there's a minimum variance or maximum variance you can achieve. So I would encourage ways to think about how to make one rule as flexible enough to work in as many neighborhoods as possible, just because we have so many different styles of development.
To really do it justice, we need more images like this to really capture that breadth, because you're absolutely right.
Yeah, absolutely. And Commissioner Sullivan is really good about raising visibility around the fact that South Everett and North Everett do not look the same, and Central Everett also has its own feel, although I'm trying to make Central Everett a thing, no one seems to say Central Everett, but I'm trying to make it a thing because it is a thing. We have a North Everett, a South Everett, and a Central Everett, and they, they are not the same. So it's difficult when we only have a singular image of typically North Everett. When we're considering these questions, it would be helpful if we could include examples from other parts of the city in addition to, to North Everett.
Are we trying, are we still trying to make the Triangle District happen still? Like, because I remember we talked about that for a while. Is that, is that still a thing?
Can I clarify real quick? So we do already have in the code that the option for the average amongst like the neighboring property, so that is an option now under the current regulations. I don't think we're talking about removing that at all. It sounds like you would like that to remain in some capacity?
I, I think it does help to preserve some level of character consistency.
The other element to consider too is, is even if we reduce it to a 10-foot setback, we would allow, you know, the front porch or front entryway, however we wanted to find that term, to encroach within that setback. So you still could get fairly close to where the front property line is. If we start reducing the front setback entirely, there is other regulations from other groups, including Public Works, they can't construct over that property line. So just kind of keep that information in mind that, at least for that front setback, they're never really gonna be able to get like just a zero-foot front setback and then have the porch still go further out, regardless of what the right-of-way conditions are, so.
Well, in your front yard?
Yes, I'm an Everett resident. I am one who has, like if you look at my street and my block, I've got a 20-foot setback from my property line, there's another 20 feet of yard until you even get to my sidewalk. And so it's just this massive front yard, and nobody knows, I don't think along my block that half of it is not actually ours, but I maintain it, it's my yard. But it's something to keep in mind because there's plenty of those instances across the board where it is set further back. I could benefit from moving my structure boards.
Do you live in Central Everett?
I do not.
She's in the Triangle District.
Okay, I think I've got frontage types on, on next meeting's list, and there's a lot of really great stuff. The commerce, middle housing... The commerce, middle housing, I think it's the detailed toolkit for Puget Sound has a section called "frontage types" where they get into some really, really good design standards to encourage, and it interacts with the setbacks, too. So I think we'll return to that topic. Do we have energy to at least start parking? That's the last one.
Oh goodness, Commissioners. You know, parking can become, that can become quite a lot. It's 8:20. Do you folks want to dive into this, or do you want to save this for our meeting on the 4th?
Let's just set 10 minutes and just...
No, not with parking. It's all or nothing. We're either going to dive into it, or we're going to hold it, because this can become a hot topic.
Next meeting.
I concur.
Okay.
I think you can do it in 10 minutes.
I had a question, not related to parking, well, I mean, pseudo-related to parking, I guess.
You can't, no, no parking.
Be very careful. Well, this is setbacks and driveway widths. I was looking at the back of the NBA handout, and they're advocating for a driveway width of 10 feet. Do we regulate the width of a driveway in Everett?
We absolutely regulate the driveway width.
Of course we do.
In Everett, we allow a minimum of 10 feet in all cases.
Okay.
So we do regulate that, you know, if you have alley access, you are required to take access from the alley first and foremost, unless you meet very specific criteria otherwise. 10 feet's allowed in all cases. Typically, the maximum driveway width for any lot is going to be 30 feet in width at its widest point. Technically, the code says 50% or up to 30 feet, so sometimes it might be a little less, but 10 feet is allowed in all cases.
Commissioner Atkins?
I didn't.
I was thinking up here, and maybe I'm missing something, but I know we're talking about middle housing and accommodating for middle housing and making all these adjustments and things, but am I wrong that it's theoretically possible we could do all this stuff, and at the end of the day, not one single unit of middle housing gets built? People just take advantage of this to either expand or make bigger single-family houses? I mean, is, so I guess, I mean...
Unlikely, I think.
Well, not unlikely, practically, but theoretically possible, right?
Unless there was, the progressive standards would help with that. But in general, you just get so much more for selling two units or renting than one large unit.
Well, and I get that, and that's the economic, you know, side of it. So I understand that's not realistic. I guess it just, that was just, it kind of flipped my mind over that idea of, again, what is the, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to drive with the idea of incentivizing, you know, so providing more incentive through the code to actually make more middle housing? Or are we just trying to accommodate for that as an option? You know, and I think, I think those are, to me, that's a fundamental difference in how you approach this, because you could do things to actually say, okay, if you're going to build middle housing six years, you can do 90% lot coverage, but if you're only doing single, you can only do, you're stuck at 45. And that, to me, is, there's fundamental differences in there about how that, what your goal is and how you do that. And so I'm still kind of trying to figure that out. And again, maybe that consensus idea, I think maybe there's, you know, coming from, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to drive it or just accommodate it, maybe?
I think we could be both, though. I think we can be both. I'm accommodating. I want to see as many options as possible for our community and let them decide, you know, different people are going to want different things in different communities and characters very, very differently described and felt and what's important in their communities. So I think we need to make as many options that they can have to utilize in architects and designers and builders. But I think we're doing both. It's also encouraging people to do that. It's really allowing them to, for the first time since we started shutting codes down back in the 80s.
Although, it seems there's certain things you could do, and you could almost create it in a way that you make it more feasible to create multiple units than, and make it actually more difficult to create more single family. I mean, you could do that. And again, I'm not advocating necessarily for one, it's just that idea of settling on what is our, what is our driving, you know, purpose and intent?
I think it's tough to figure out what people want, though. So if you try to go somewhere, that's not always what you get, and then you get kind of nothing. Because I think we've tried, I think we've done, there's examples where we've done that, where we've tried to encourage certain types of development, and it didn't really work very well. So I think, in my mind, alternate, alternatives as greatly as possible as we can allow people to go out there and figure things out is the best way, but...
I personally want to see as many three-story Tudor-style homes around Commissioner Finch's house as possible.
Would you like the Rapunzel Tower in that one as well? Yeah.
I live around three-story Tudor homes. And I like them.
I see an item on the agenda that's Resolution 24001. I assume that is an error, correct? Okay. So with that, I think we have concluded our agenda for the evening, and we are adjourned. Thank you.